It really hit home to me in the sense that my, as I saw the map, my daughter actually worked in a psychological counseling center in Batakalua and had been through Colombo. And realizing if one person in the world isn't safe, no one is safe. And we have to understand that. So with that, please, a moment of silence. Thank you very much. I'd like to ask Dylan Tomlinson, come on up Dylan. And I think Alderman Mattson's going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, but Dylan is working on his Eagle Scout and he's going to join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge ever allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Alderman Mattson, who is officially leading us in the pledge of allegiance tonight. I want to begin with our wish you a good evening. And again, as we begin our meeting of the city council, I want to welcome all those in attendance and those who are viewing the meeting on television or on the internet. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions and please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region by way of our TV broadcast. We are happy that you're participating in your city government and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for all of our citizens. For the children, adults, seniors, and families in our community, those in attendance and those watching at home, I thank you for joining us. At this time, we ask that you turn off or silence your cell phones or other electronic handheld devices as they can be disruptive and interfere with the audio system here in the chamber. If you wish to address the council on a specific item on the agenda, you are encouraged to do so during that discussion item. You'll have an opportunity to address the council under public with business portion of the meeting, which will occur towards the end. You, when addressing the council, I will ask that you step to the podium, wait to be recognized by myself, and speak to the council as a body and not to any single member. We will ask that you limit your remarks to no more than five minutes and realize this is a listening session and we hear your input, but do not respond at that point because it's not been listed on the agenda prior to this meeting. I will ask that everyone observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste, and I know you all will. So, thank you all again for being here. First, a roll call, please.
Ambrose?
Here.
Condon?
Here.
Rossen?
Here.
Dickman?
Here.
Tomkins?
Here.
Gripp?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Clul?
Here.
Mattson?
Here.
And Dunn?
Here.
Ten present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, Brian. Will it Alderman move approval of minutes of the city council meeting for April 10th? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. Is there a city administrator update this evening?
Yes, just an update that we will finally have an opening day for baseball on Friday. And as a reminder, Saturday is a doubleheader. The day game is free entry to residents of the community.
Great. Well, thank you. We're all excited to see that. And again, I want to just reiterate, part of that is we've had, after a lot of struggles over the years, a very good discussion with Canadian Pacific. They've been partnering with us to get the stadium open and also the long-term plans for the riverfront and the crossings. So, we want to thank them as well, but more importantly, the River Bandits and all of our people in our community for their patience. Will it Alderman move approval of the report of the committee, the whole, for April 17th?
Somebody will move second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Great, thank you. We have five appointments this evening and one proclamation. First, appointments for the Riverfront Improvement Commission. Dee Bremer is a reappointment. Four new appointments, Linda Gilman, Erie Johnson, Michael Leendo, and Ruby Mateos for the Civil Rights Commission. Is there a motion to approve?
Some motion.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Thank you. Next, we have proclamations tonight. Alderman Dunn is going to read the proclamation and present for Arbor Day proclamation, which is on April 26th. Alderman Dunn.
Thank you, Your Honor. The proclamation reads, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperatures, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees in our city increase property value, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, and whereas the city of Davenport has deserved each Arbor Day for 39 consecutive years by planting trees, the planting of trees now provides benefits for future generations. Now therefore we, Mayor Frank Klipsh and the Davenport City Council, do hereby proclaim April 26, 2019, as Arbor Day, and encourage all citizens to support the maintenance of a healthy urban forest dated this 24th day of April 2019. I move the proclamation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Thank you. Alderman Dunn, if you would present the proclamation, please.
Sure.
Proclamation, please. Nicole Gleason, our Director of Public Works, is going to accept for our city and our arborist and our whole Public Works team.
Thank you so much for this proclamation. And just as a reminder, the city does plant trees in our parks and boulevards and things like that. And if any resident ever identifies an area, that might be a good area for a tree. We do take that into consideration as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. And also, I just want you to know, this was chosen wisely to have this presentation by Alderman Dunn. He'll be out there on the 26th planting trees, which he's done for a number of years. So, thank you for that and anybody else who wants to join in that process. So, thank you, Alderman Dunn. Our next item is our only other presentation today, and that is our local business, the foundation of our community award. And I want to just read this, please, and I'm going to make the presentation out in front. In the late 1970s, the arrival of Caton altered the office equipment landscape and helped legitimize the aftermarket becoming a valuable resource where a customer could not be find, where a customer could not find trusted, reliable products at a great value. Caton specializes in developing the programs, products, solutions that companies need to stabilize business, increase profitability, engage new market opportunities, and meet tomorrow's challenges. In addition to providing parts and supplies for legacy monochrome machines, Caton helps discover new revenue streams and increase profits with new build and re manufactured printer products while also meeting the changing demands of existing customers with their large and growing selection of high-quality color parts and supplies. Caton has been one of the world's leading providers of aftermarket-compatible imaging supplies, photo receptors, and parts for copiers, printers, and other imaging equipment. Caton has pioneered and helped legitimize the imaging supplies aftermarket. Today, Caton serves 11,300 customers in 123 companies. Caton's 109,000-square-foot Davenport location at 7,300 North Brady Street has been in operation for 25 years, while the company as a whole is celebrating its 40th year. The Davenport facility currently employs 30 people, and they have the great distinction of that their facility has an accuracy rate of 99.98 percent. We want to thank Caton for your 25 years of fantastic customer service, as well as your continued contributions to economic growth and the hometown print on our Davenport community. Caton is another wonderful example of one of Davenport's local businesses that are the foundation of our community. Sandra Myers will be accepting the foundation of community award on behalf of Caton. Sandra, you want to meet me out in front?
This is another great example of local businesses that are the foundation of our community, recognizing the unique businesses of Davenport, Iowa. Caton Industries, April 2019. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, please.
Thank you very much. Davenport has been a really good home for Caton and its employees, and we deeply appreciate this recognition. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Now, we'll have petitions and communications from the council members and myself. And Alderman McGinnis, our Chair of Community Engagement, will lead the discussion.
Thank you, Your Honor. Our theme this week is reduce, reuse, and recycle. We have two fun events happening on Mississippi Avenue coming up at the end of this week. In honor of Earth Day, Habitat Restore is offering its Earth Day Sale, 25 percent off everything in the store unless otherwise marked. It's 10 to 5:00 PM on Friday. They're located at 3629 Mississippi Avenue, and that's just north of Kimberly Road. And of course, all of their funds go to Habitat for Humanity, own building houses in Davenport. Just up the block, Humility of Mary will hold its Spring Fresh Start Benefit Sale, and that's Friday from 8:00 to 4:00 PM, and Saturday, 9:00 to 3:00 PM. All sorts of home goods, furniture, and clothing will be for sale, and all proceeds from these sales go to Humility of Mary's work with those who are homeless or at risk for being homeless. And finally, the Davenport Public Library is offering a Free Shred Day, 1:00 to 3:00 PM, Thursday, May 2nd, at the Eastern Avenue Branch. You can bring up to three containers of personal documents for onsite shredding. Ray, there's no reason for you to keep those checks back to 1993. So, thank you, Your Honor, and that's all for me tonight.
Thank you very much. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. And thank you, Mary. You're always on top of things, and I appreciate it. We got an election year coming up this year, and it's pretty exciting. We have a couple potential mayoral candidates up here on the dais and one sitting out in the crowd. And as we look forward to the election and meeting the candidates and talking to the new candidates, my opinion of the number one issue in the city of Davenport is crime. And I'm asking everybody, as the election cycle moves forward and you have the opportunity to talk to candidates, you got to engage them on what their plans are to beat back the crime in our great city. And the last couple of years, you know, I can't put up with another year like the last two. So, changes are needed, and with the election coming up, let's hold these candidates and the city council accountable. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Seeing no one, I'd ask for approval of all the items on the consent agenda. It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Tomkins?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Clul?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes, except item number 17.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
And Dickman?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor?
Thank you very much. X and Y. Define your position again, Alderman Dunn. You voted no on that one?
No on item 17.
Okay, got that, Brian? Great, thank you. I think we have another, some ordinances, resolutions, and motions this evening. First of all, is there a motion to suspend the rules to add and vote on the following resolutions? And first of all, and I think we know what those are, do you want me, do I need to read those first at this point?
Well, you can just say one's, has to do with sewer project, and the other has to do with a statement on a couple of pending state legislative items.
There we go. As said, there's a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Roll call, please.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Clul?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Tomkins?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor?
Okay, the rules are suspended. This will be our, the one resolution is resolution approving a contract for amendment of FY 2018 contract sewer repair program in the amount of 115,000. Is there any public with comments on this item? Will it Alderman move the resolution? Is there any discussion from any aldermen? Seeing none, would you call, I'm sorry, yes?
Yes, Your Honor.
Alderman McGinnis.
Yes, if we could have someone explain the resolution regarding the tax reform bill so everybody here understands.
We still got to do that.
Oh, I'm s-
Okay. Any questions on the sewer repair program? Seeing none, roll call, please.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Clul?
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Tomkins?
Yes.
Gripp?
Control, Bettendorf, Scott County, and now us. The other ones voted no. To require us to put a cap on what we can get for revenue is ridiculous. And this, this, this attack on local control has got to stop. And I'm so glad we're opposing this. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman McGinnis.
We could have someone talk about this and in what's happening with the county and other municipalities as well.
Brandon Wright, CFO and Assistant City Administrator. So there are two bills right now working their way through both the Senate and the House. They're called property, property tax reform bills. They're going through essentially what they're doing is, as Alderman Mattson said, that they are aimed at kind of, kind of restricting local control of revenues, moving it towards kind of a 2% growth model. And if, and if it exceeds a 2% growth model, subjecting that additional amount of money to reverse referendum in that process. And so ultimately what it does is it kind of, it's a, it's kind of a more of a revenue limiting type of a, type of a bill. As it was ordered, also does things like trying to cap the amounts of, of reserves that we can have in our general fund for that as well. So there are a lot of concerns that we've had with it. We've been working with our, with our legislators on the bill. They've been open to meeting with us and hearing from us on this topic. The good news is that as of right now, it looks like for the most part that the parts related to kind of the limiting of revenues and all that is being pulled out of the bill. And it's going just toward, there are some components that are there to aim towards transparency. We have no problems with that, those portions of the bill. Those portions are, are right now set to remain, but the limiting parts are being removed. So I think good news is on the horizon for that if it continues to move the way that it looks like it is. But still obviously taking a proactive stance to oppose any legislation that would ultimately threaten that local control is just very important for the city council.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, no, Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, for years we work hard to stabilize and strengthen our bond rating. And we've had some great success. And what this will do is, again, the state will tie our hands and make it difficult to improve the bond rating that will keep Davenport one of the great cities. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Seeing no one else, roll call please.
Yes.
Mattson?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yeah.
Condon?
Yes.
Rossen?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Tompkins?
Yes.
Grip?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor. Thank you very much. That resolution has been adopted. Now we're going to open this up with public with business. Again, we ask that you come forward, identify yourself, your address or your ward. And we ask that you limit your remarks to no more than five minutes. And remind everyone that we don't respond at this level. This is a listening session for us. So that in fact, anything not on the agenda, we don't act on in this type of a setting. So we just want to let you know of that. Is there anyone who wants to speak tonight?
Thank you, Mayor, council members, for the chance to speak tonight. I'm Bill Handel. I live in, when I'm in Davenport on High Street, Fourth Ward. As you may know, I spend maybe a third of my time in Davenport and the rest in Nashville, the music city. While I enjoy living in Nashville, I want you to know that my heart belongs to the city of Davenport, where I was born and grew up in. At my age, like a salmon, born in a particular stream, wandering the oceans for most of its life, returning to the precise place of its birth, I'm returning to the city near the Mississippi waters, which I deeply love. So it should come no one's surprise that as an architect, I should take intense interest in what happens on the riverfront. Right now sadly, I see a city whose downtown is again paralyzed by floodwaters. What a great time to observe the effects of a flood, much like looking at a specimen slide on a microscope. While I've seen many a flood in my 67 years and understand the aversion to a flood wall, I don't think a visitor to our town would be so charitable to the city of Davenport. What's the matter with these folks anyway? I'm sure they'll say, after all, flood me once, shame on Mother Nature. Flood me twice, flood me 30 times. What's the matter with these people? At least something needs to be explored differently than what we're doing now. Easter Sunday was outstandingly sunny this year, and I took the opportunity to see how the city of Muscatine has fared in this flood. Turns out they recently raised their version of River Drive sloping down there to the river. The riverfront park was soaked, but the street and the adjoining commercial buildings were fine. Street is essentially a flood wall in Muscatine. But since you can drive on it and walk on it and everything is sloped down from there, the view that they have is totally unimpeded of the river, which is, I think, fine. It seems to me, and thinking back when I was in Seattle many years ago, they're, they raised the whole Pioneer Square area by 10 feet at one point. What was the second floor of all the buildings became the first floor. They filled it in because they realized it wasn't working anymore for them. So I suggest that if River Drive between Pershing and Scott Streets were raised a certain amount, we'd have a better public relations position in our city. And perception is very important, right? I walked that stretch yesterday, looking at all the buildings on there. And I'd suggest raising the street of River Drive at that area by four feet in elevation. I'd also add a two-foot-high concrete planter on the south side of River Drive, much like you currently have on your median at River Drive. That would give us a total of six feet of additional protection. And with the road raised four feet and a two-foot planter on one side, it wouldn't provide any obstruction to motorists or pedestrians. Obviously, it makes a big change to the parking areas adjoining it, but those are all to be changed anyway per the upcoming plans. We would of course have an opening in that two-foot-high wall at our main cities and just add more Hescos or sandbags. But again, giving a six-foot of additional protection would make only an extremely unusual flood cause us any public relations problem that we're currently suffering. So now I want to talk about the Dahlquist Art Studio Plan that has been prepared for the city by the Figgy and by the Downtown Partnership. But first, let's look at the River Vision Plan of 2014. Somebody could give me it when I have only a minute left, that would be great. I'd say the 2014 River Vision Plan is characterized by flow. The flow of this mighty river, long linear geometric elements, not a curved line to be found. A restaurant building over here, the one side facing the river is straight, parallel to the river, the side facing the city, parallel to the city grid. Quite importantly, there is a visual connection at the end of the Sky Bridge. As you're walking on the Sky Bridge, looking on both sides, at the end, you have this balcony that gives you the first time of view directly to the river. And that's very important. And as you'll see later, that's something that the current plan, that the art studio put together, doesn't give us. Got water cannons at the end of Brady Street. There's something different at each street. They're not all the same, which is, again, the art studio is saying everything needs to be the same with these boxes that they're showing. We've got a two-and-a-half foot, two-and-a-half block area of public art between Perry and Brady. And historic elements on this, as you can see right here, the Levy Inn stays where it is. This limestone wall and its wrought iron historic railings are stay as it is. The limestone seawall here at the east end of the concrete wall was added in the 50s. That remains. So there's a respect to history. You can see around these areas by the fountain, the Dillon Fountain, brick-type paving. It's very subdued, like we have in our downtown area. We've got brick and concrete as our, as our palette, which is very appropriate to a city that's both old and new. So now let's look at the RDG or the Dahlquist Art Studio, and I'll just call it the Art Studio, the Art Studio's plan. It has no straight lines at all. It claims to be built on a foundation that River Vision gave it, but it has no foundation of River Vision at all. It's built on a shaky foundation. Can I ask for 45 seconds? Artistic random curves predominate, ostensibly inspired by the water itself, but it gives a totally different feel. It pays lip service to history. The historic Levy Inn, which people have used for 100 years to gauge the level of the water in our city, isn't destroyed, but it's moved out of its historic location. A quarter mile of seawall is removed. And about a quarter of that, 400 feet of it, is well-made, historic and beautiful limestone seawall, which I see no reason should be touched, including the one at the end of Main Street. So get rid of the 55 concrete seawall, but leave that one away.
Mr. Handel?
I'm sorry.
We're running out of time.
Next week, I'll tell you the rest, okay?
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Anyway, I was dismayed to hear, to see yesterday's meeting. There was not a single person other than me at the Levy Commission meeting. Although it is a public meeting, I don't think people are looking at it yet. They need to.
Yes, sir.
How you doing? My name is Willie Shorter, and I live at 501 West Third Street. And I've been trying to talk to the mayor here for the last three years, but I never could get appointment. So when I found out about this meeting today, I came. Because there's something going on in the Harris Building. When Roy DeWitt was in that building, he harassed nothing but the minority people. They put, they, they, he harassed us all through the night from 4:30 till 3:30 in the morning. He harassed the elderly people, ran away their providers. He called the police on us when we was just only outside minding our own business. We're supposed to be able to stand outside. We can't follow the police because they're only doing their job. Then I hear about the Civil Rights Division is having a little problem going on down here. Without the Civil Rights Division, I wouldn't be able to speak, have someone talk for us. You know what I'm saying? So that's the reason I'm here, for the civil rights. Because right now, where we live is, 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 there's a lot of elderly people. I know there's an elderly guy. I have over 40 letters here how Roy DeWitt harassed them. One of the guys are, have heart problems. He lives in a basement now, got put out for just no apparent reason. And he have tenants there, over 30 to 40 tenants there, can vouch for that. And for the Davenport Police Department, you guys is on point by riding and constantly riding. You got them stable, but the best thing to do is start walking and be back on the bikes. Because when they see your presence, everybody's paying attention to that. I'm in, I'm up in our community every day. I see you guys constantly. So far as that, keep doing that. Far as these young guys that's stealing these cars, I don't have no answer to that. But they took a lot of things away from our, our, our kids in the community, and that's the reason they turn into other things. I'm a father, son in and out of prison, and I also have kids that's doing good, but I'm scared to let them go anywhere. So I'm constantly checking on them. So that's why I'm here, because the Civil Rights Division is, is all we have here. And y'all not understanding what we going through in that building. I was trying to get the elderly people to come because some of them can't walk, some of them are hubbub rounds, and some of them is just terrified. Some of them scared just not, some of them scared is not to say anything because they scared it gonna be blackball, be put out their apartment. And did you know that we only had two women in our building said that they, they was raped? I was in the shower last Friday, and the pest control man has a key to my apartment. He comes in to spray. I'm in the shower, he comes in the shower and had to run him out the shower. Now if I would have heard of him, then I would have been across the street. But I just want to address this so y'all know. No one came over there to ask anybody about how, what was going on and how they felt over there. We are walking on pins and needles over there. You know what I'm saying? And we have three tenants in the building and keep calling us the N-word. And because of their elderly, we just ignore them. Because we, because I even, I don't have nowhere to go once I leave this, this apartment. And I'm planning on moving anyway. I've been dealing with, I've been living here in the state of Davenport all my life, and I had a good time here, all the way until I graduated from school. And then I seen the racism that I feel down here. That's how I feel. I've been paying for a white man's baby since 93. I have documents stating that he is the father, but they still say I have to pay. The son right now is drawing social security from this father. But I still owe 7,500. I'm not understanding that. I have the father's DNA. He's the one been trying to help me, but no one down here will listen to me. So therefore, I just have to pay for a child that's not mine. I just want you councilmen to know what's going on in our community and where we live. Y'all go home every night and be at peace. We don't. We have to walk on pins and needles. And at nighttime, we have to figure out how, when it start getting dark, how to get home.
Thank you, Mr. Shorter, for your comments. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else?
Brian Winger, 2709 West 67th Street. Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. I hope today finds you well. Not many of you know me on a personal level, but I'm the kind of person that even if you don't know me personally, I would tell you if your fly was down or if you had something in your teeth. When I was younger, I told my friends to let me know if I was acting a fool in front of somebody important. Today, I'm here to open your eyes to something you may or may not be aware of as a courtesy to you before you look any more foolish. At last week's city council meeting, there was a special guest that most probably didn't even notice was there. That person is the local organizer for a major presidential campaign. Y'all witnessed the mayor tried to cut the citizen-participation part of the meeting short after each speaker. Y'all heard the concerned citizens of Davenport speaking out against the injustice of the dismantling of the city's Civil Rights Commission. Y'all saw the spectacle of city council members being escorted out by the class traitors for no reason at what cost for the taxpayers. You know who else witnessed all of this? Do you know what one of their jobs are while they're here in Davenport? It's to report to the local, to report the local political situation and how their candidate can use that when on the campaign trail. So here we are a week later. I have to tell you, as a citizen of Davenport, it's very unsettling feeling being embarrassed on a national level. But here we are. Now this person is not only the presidential campaign organizer in the area, but most of them probably get their knowledge, it isn't the only one. Most of them probably get their knowledge of this situation from the local paper, whereas we all know they don't always tell the truth. You know, but anyway, I digress. As most of us know, I myself have personally witnessed that and other people have also. So anyway, I'm going to meet with this person for lunch tomorrow, and I will be the reporter for what's happening in the city. What is it I will be reporting to them tomorrow? A mayor and city council that did the right thing for the citizens they are supposed to be serving and left the Civil Rights Commission alone per the requests of their constituents? Or a mayor and city council that says the hell with the citizens of Davenport, we will do what we want? You tell me.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else at this time? Yes, ma'am.
Cassandra Erwin, Fifth Ward. As he said before, this has been now featured on a national stage with a presidential candidate. And this has been going on for almost a year. Last year, we had someone come to the meeting to try to oppose the changes being proposed to the Civil Rights Commission, who requested an interpreter in accordance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, and they were ignored. So we have a clear violation of the law that this council and the Civil Rights Commission is supposed to be protecting its citizens from. And it was ignored. And then repeated attempts to dismantle, change, or restaff the commission. This is, seems to be a theme considering last year's move to change the Levy Commission, which was vocally opposed by the constituents. And the council listened to their voters and abstained or removed the notion. What is the difference here? Why is it such a force that the council feels the need to change the commission when it has been doing a very successful job at defending the constituent's civil rights? The theme seems to be business ties. And I don't think that that is appropriate to be on a civil rights commission. You're supposed to be representing the constituents, the voters, and the common people, not business interests.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I was going to write something different.
Excuse me, view in my, your name and your address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Jo Ironshield. I am from Davenport, but I live in Bettendorf. I was here almost a year ago for the same situat, for the same problem that we're having right now. And I was going to rewrite something and write and read it, but I still have the same questions and the same worries that I had when I originally wrote the first one. So I'm just going to say the first one again. So, hello, I'm Jo Ironshield. I am a co-founder of Sage Chasers, an indigenous grassroots organization. And I come to you today on the issue of keeping the independence of the Civil Rights Commission. As well as me, I personally support Latrice Lacy. But also as a woman of color and having Lakota Sioux blood in my veins, I know about civil rights being taken. If you pass this, if you pass, if you pass any changes to the Civil Rights Commission, then you are ripping history away from the civil rights fight, I believe. You do this, and soon every city will follow. Not acceptable. That's like the US government signing treaties with my people and then taking them and breaking them. Oh, wait, they already did that one. Then the seven members of the Civil Rights Commission will no longer be the ones that make the decision about the administrative and with the budget. No. I think it's important to focus on the fact that the Civil Rights Department is efficiently run, and there is absolutely no need for change. Civil Rights Commission has been in existence since 1962 and has been successfully. Why suddenly try to change anything overhaul, overhaul the Civil Rights Commission? Why change? The Civil Rights Board are made of humans and no struggle. And now you want to try to strip the Civil Rights Commission decision-making away? Makes me wonder if there are other ulterior motives here. I think that the independence should stay with the Civil Rights Commission. Let's not destroy what our founding fathers, Malcolm X, Martin Luther King, Medgar Evers, Russell Means, who fought for civil rights of people, but for all people. No matter your color, of who your skin, of your skin, they fought for that and they died for that. Please, please, again, don't do this. If it's not broke, don't fix it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else this evening?
Good evening. My name is Carrie Dugan. I'm in Mr. Mattson's Ward. I think I can answer some questions here. We're wondering how these kids are on the streets committing these crimes. Anywhere that a school system fails, you will see crime. This is a fact. Our school system has failed. A year ago, our school was cited for eight counts of violating federal law. I don't know if you guys are aware of that because I haven't really seen anyone at the meetings. I've been going to school meetings for a year since then. And I can tell you that crime is not the biggest issue, corruption is. Our school board is corrupt. They are not meeting our school's needs. They are continuing to violate federal law. So, sorry. I'm sorry, apologize. I'm not a politician. I am not an activist. I'm a mom, so apologize for my public speaking. It's pretty clear, as I run around town, I have a disabled child myself. I've been working for over a decade to get her an education in this town. And she has not been able to get one. So I can tell you firsthand that that's why these kids lose, leave school. These kids don't want to leave school. They don't want to fail. They want an education, and their parents want one too. But this city has allowed our school leaders to refuse thousands of kids an education. We have proof of 2,866. We have proof of more than that individually, and nothing's being done. This is a municipal failure on your part. And we know why. There's obviously a vendetta against Ms. Lacy. There's obviously connections to your corporate friends. These are not more important than our community. If we don't do something about our school district, this town will fail. I don't know if any of you have seen what happened in Texas, but Texas was required to pay back federal money because they didn't educate. That will happen here. That is going to happen here. We need your help. We needed a year ago. Please, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this evening? Yes, ma'am.
Hi there. It's me, Laura Elena Rodriguez. I am with the DSA, also the Quad Cities Intersectional Action Network. I didn't really prepare a speech. I didn't think I had much to say, but something, somebody said kind of just rubbed me the wrong way. And I just felt I'd just call it out for the dog whistle it was. The comment was, we should, those running for mayor should focus on beating back crime. I believe that's how it was phrased. Beating back crime. And something about me just rubbed the wrong way. That just sounds like a dog whistle to me. It just sounds wrong. I mean, we want to focus on crime. What's happening here at the city council sure feels like some crime. What's happening to the Civil Rights Commission feels like a crime. It feels to me like we've got some corporate donors involved, and we've got some money involved and people doing the wrong thing. And I talked to you guys about this before. I don't know how y'all sat through church last time after what I said. I mean, I'm shaking, I'm angry. And hearing somebody talk about their kid, I got a kid with autism, and he's here, and he's, he's strongly for the Civil Rights Commission because he knows, living in the Quad Cities, he might not live on this side of the bridge, but he might want to one day. And the idea that we've got people beating back crime, let me tell you, my son has oppositional defiance disorder. One of the ways that I parent him, because I used to come down real hard on him, you know? I used to yell. There used to be a lot of yelling in my house. I realized, you know, this kid's on the school-to-prison pipeline, like a lot of kids in Davenport. And that was proven by all those studies that you, I don't know, I don't think any of you went to the school board meetings like she's mentioned. But if you were to pay attention, you'd find that one way to deal with children that are acting out and the best way to deal with it, because I haven't had yelling in my house for over a year since I read this book, collaborative problem solving, all right? It's when everybody comes to the table and everybody brainstorms together and everybody comes up with the best solutions. We, we do things proactively. We look at problems and we start solving them ahead of time. We don't nip them in the bud. We don't come up at them and, and tamp down on them or whatever somebody was saying up here. What we do is we come up with solutions beforehand. That's what I think the purpose of city government should be. We should bring people to the table who are actually directly affected by it and talk to them and actually have conversations. And maybe we'd come up with solutions instead of just investing more money in police, investing more money and, you know, coming down on them and having crackdowns. We don't need none of that. Just bring people to the table, listen to them. And one way to do that is to have a working civil rights commission. Because honestly, if you are filling the Civil Rights Commission with people with business interests, I guarantee they're not going to give one heck about any of it. They're not going to care how the people that they are representing feel. They're going to care about the bottom line, the almighty dollar. And it sure sounds like a lot of you are too. So I don't know. I would, I would just reevaluate the whole thing and come correct, come, you know, act right. Y'all are embarrassing all of us.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Steve Duffy, and I am a candidate for the city of Davenport Mayor. And I 100% support what Alderman Ambrose said about crime. And we need to work on it and come to a solution as to what we can do to eliminate crime in the city of Davenport, make it a safe place to live. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak tonight? Anyone else? Second, is there a second to? Okay. There's a minute, a motion and a second. All in favor to adjourn, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned.